Working here from staff to electeds to appointees. We're really blessed and I'm really thankful and grateful in this time of the year. So, I just wanted to say that, starting out. We'll get started this morning before we call it to order and have our prayer. We do not have anyone on the schedule today. Anyone want to lead us in the prayer? If not, then I'll lead us in it. And Commissioner McCam, if you would, the pledges, of course. So, if you would, please write. Our most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for those that are gathered here with us, Lord, and we most of all, thank you for your Son. Father, in this time of Christmas, of gathering, of family, of friends, help us, dear Lord, to remember exactly what this time of season is. You have blessed us beyond our measure, Lord, and we give you all the praise. We ask you to forgive us of our sins. And, Lord, we ask you to be with this court and the decisions that it makes here today and that it be unto your will and not our own. And, Father, once again, please forgive us of our sins and go with these people today afterwards, that we all may have a joyous Christmas season. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texans, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right. The time is 9:03. We do have a quorum, so we will call this meeting to a order. Are there any citizens' comments at this time?
No, sir.
All right. Item number one is presentation of recognition of service and certificates. This morning, we wanted to recognize two individuals here today with us that have dedicated their lives, in many ways, to their chosen portion of the county. We have an appointed individual that goes unpaid and goes with little recognition in what their service was to this county and has been to this county. There's a sense of community that this particular individual has given. I've known him nearly my entire life. There's a dedication to Henderson County, not only to the organization but to the people, and truly an advocate for the youth of Henderson County in what his service has been. Many will remember that Henderson County Fairgrounds, its inception was for the youth of Henderson County. And this particular individual dedicated over 20 years of service in the betterment of that facility to bring opportunity of experience to the youth of Henderson County and to actually help for this facility to pave its own way. And at this time, we want to recognize with the award of a dedicated service of over 23 years to Mr. Lee Tackett. And, Mr. McCam, if you would.
We'd just like to show our appreciation for the time and energy you dedicated to Henderson County Fair Park, over 23 years. I know it's a lot of times just a thankless job, but you did a tremendous job for the youth of Henderson County and for the people of Henderson County, and that facility shows it when anybody drives by. And we appreciate you. Thank you. I would tell you, it's been a long, been a part of my life for a long time, and even though I'm retired from the board, it will continue to be a part of my life. A lot of blood, sweat, and tears out there, and thank y'all very much.
A lot of late-night meetings.
A lot of late-night meetings.
Commissioner, if you would, would like to get a picture, if you would. Y'all back up here.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Lord. Mark Teger, right, just a little bit. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It was significant, yes, Father.
And, keeping that, we have one more. We have an individual that has dedicated his life in much the same fashion to the safety of Henderson County, coming here in the very near future, the end of this year to be, in fact. We have a particular law enforcement officer that, not only with Henderson County but in his life prior to Henderson County, he felt that calling to be a part of a group of people that lived to protect us, to provide that sense of security and order in a society that is so much needed and, in the last few years, underappreciated. And he's always had a great sense of humor. I've known him for his time with Henderson County, call him my friend, and can't thank him enough for what he has done to serve us, both in his capacity, once at the Sheriff's Department, and in his most recent endeavor over the last number of years as our constable precinct two. Mr. Mitch Baker. Mitch, I believe it's 24 years, isn't it? 25? Come forward.
Well, Mitch, on behalf of Henderson County, for 24 years of law enforcement, I think 14 as constable precinct two.
No.
12.
Yes.
So?
Yeah.
I thought that bill I had was, it said 12. Anyway, for being the constable precinct two, but also the many years of dedication behind the badge here at Henderson County, 24 years of law enforcement from 1999 to, how many hours? December 31st of 2022? If you can. Anyway, we thank you for your service and welcome to retire, almost retire.
Well, that is one of the things that is our, in some areas, is whenever you have relationships, and county government runs on relationships, by the way, you can have difficulties. The individuals that we just recognized are examples of great relationships and how the good things that we can get done. And from the court to the elected officials, to department heads, appointees, we appreciate y'all very much and thank y'all for the great work in relationships that we've had, especially this year. We've done a lot, so. Before we move on to item two, is there anything the court wishes to add?
I'd just like to say thank you to both of you for your dedication to Henderson County.
Anyone else? All right. Then we'll move on to item two, which is consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioners Court on December the 13th, 2022. Are there any additions, deletions, or comments?
Hearing non-judged, I move we approve the regular meeting Commissioners Court dated December the 13th, 2022, as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and seconded by Commissioner Spigot to approve the minutes of previously held meeting of Commissioners Court on December the 13th, 2022, as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item three, consider and take action on request for overpayment of taxes from the Henderson County Tax Assessor Collector.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have two checks in the amount of $10,502.22 for court approval, and they're both due to overpayment.
Okay. Questions from this lovely lady? Hearing non-entertained motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the request for overpayment of taxes from the Henderson County Tax Assessor Collector is presented. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number four, consider and take action on request to allow Sheriff's Office Investigator to travel out of state to San Diego, California for the 38th Annual San Diego International Conference on Child and Family Maltreatment. Sheriff.
Good morning, Court. What I bring before the court today is just that Investigator Jerry Moore has an opportunity to go out to California and receive some excellent training. He is part of the Crimes Against Children Task Force. He's gonna go out there and the class that he's gonna be taking is involving child homicides investigations, and the expenses on this trip will be totally covered by the Help Center. So, we just bring him before the court to allow him to go out, out of state, to have, to be at the training, and then the Help Center's gonna pay all the expenses.
Questions for the sheriff?
Is this a training that we've received before? This is our first time.
This is our first time, yes, sir. Any further questions or comments? Entertained motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spigot and seconded by Commissioner Tulley to approve the request to allow Sheriff's Office Investigator to travel out of state to San Diego, California for the 38th Annual San Diego International Conference on Child and Family Maltreatment. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item number five is consider and take action to enter into an interlocal agreement with the City of Athens for the Crimes Against Children Task Force. Sheriff.
Yes, Court, this is another agreement with, this one is with the City of Athens. It is for five years. They've agreed to join Henderson County in the Crimes Against Children Task Force and at the tune of $50,000 a year to assist us for paying for an investigator to conduct those cases. We actually put out a letter last week. The letter's closed today, so hopefully by this week, we'll have the fifth investigator picked to join the task force. There's already five, four of them over there, so January 1, we'll be ready to put the fifth one over there, and then hopefully, we've still got several cities outstanding that are saying they're gonna join the task force, and we should be bringing y'all some more interlocal agreements to be able to pay a sixth investigator. And the City of Athens, the city council approved this on December the 12th, and just bringing it for the court to get it fully executed.
Questions for the sheriff?
How many? We've done several of these in the last couple of weeks. How many is this so far?
This will be number four. We've done Log Cabin, the City of Tool, Brownsburg ISD, this will be number five. Brownsburg ISD, Malakoff ISD, and then the City of Athens is today.
That's great.
Any other questions? Comments?
I'll make the motion to approve, to approve the interlocal agreement with the City of Athens for the Crimes Against Children Task Force. Judge's authorization to sign.
I'll second. It doesn't matter.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the interlocal agreement with the City of Athens for the Crimes Against Children's Task Force with the judge's authorization to sign. Any further comments? All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Thank you, Court. Thank you, Sheriff. Item number six is consider and take action on reimbursement of travel expense of $110.62 for AgriLife extension. Ms. Lee?
Apparently, the conference getting a few overlooked.
And this was the Naucodocus Conference that was put on AgriLife and educational?
Right, and so we just need approval to see if I can pay reimbursement.
Okay. Questions? Entertained motion?
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner McCam, to approve the reimbursement for travel expenses for AgriLife extension as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item number seven, consider and take action on an application for the fiscal year 2024 Texas Department of Transportation STEP grant for traffic safety. Ms. Brown?
Yes, sir. This is a funding that we are eligible to apply through Texas dot. It will provide reimbursement of up to $30,000 on overtime for officers to help work areas that are high in major accidents and fatal crashes. It is, it does have a 20% match that we are able to match with the fringe benefits from that overtime, and I am asking for the sheriff's authorization to sign both the application and the expenses that we will, or the reports for reimbursement that will be monthly.
Okay. Court, questions?
Have we received this grant before?
I have not, but I have a reason.
We've been involved in other STEP grants, not this particular one. This particular one is due to our average in certain areas in Henderson County. Our average on major crashes, locatelli crashes, is on the rise a little bit, so we're gonna be in specific zones, putting more manpower and more units working those zones in attempt to decrease that rise. Where it's strictly, we've been involved in like DWI STEP programs before. This is gonna be strictly traffic influenced, so any traffic violation will be in those particular zones.
Any other questions?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
With the sheriff's signature?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and seconded by Commissioner Tulley to approve the application for fiscal year 2024 Texas Department of Transportation STEP grant for traffic safety with the sheriff's authorization to sign all documents?
Yes, sir.
Any further comments? All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item number eight is consider and take action on contract with Trailer and Associates for Administrative Services for the 2021 Texas Community Development Block Grant for Crescent Heights Water Supply Improvements. Ms. Brown?
Yes, sir. So, this is just the administrative contract that we have to sign to, for Trailer and Associates to be able to provide the administrative services for the Crescent Heights program. It's just the final step. There is a cost associated that's covered with the funding that we're receiving through the Texas Department of Agriculture for the funding, and it's just the standard contract that was provided.
Ms. Spigot, this is in your precinct as a continuation. Any comments?
It's been a long ago. It started before I was Commissioner, but I'm happy to see that we're moving forward with Trailer and Associates, and thank you for all your hard work.
Any other comments or questions from the court?
This cost that is associated with it, it's not directly from the county budget, though, is it? Is it from the grant?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. So, this is the approved amount for administrative services through the funding.
Did the prior person that dropped out of this, did they get any grant money? Okay.
For those of you keeping score, we had a previous grant administrator that decided to no longer administer this grant for us. Any further discussion or comments?
Hearing non, I'd like to make the motion to approve with the judge's signature.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spigot and seconded by Commissioner Tulley to approve the contract with Trailer and Associates for Administrative Services for the 2021 Texas Community Development Block Grant for Crescent Heights Water System Improvements with judge's authorization to sign. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Thank you. Item nine is consider and take action on proposed standard bid packet template for use by Henderson County.
Good morning, Court.
Good morning.
What I have before you this morning is the additions that are needed to update the standard terms and conditions for our bid packet. Those include not being disbarred from the samhs.gov website, adding an actual clause in our packet that addresses the conflict of interest questionnaire. We had the form in there, we just didn't have a clause in there addressing it, so I added that. A disclosure of any lobbying activities that the awarded vendor may be a part of. The Form 1295, which is a conflict, or I'm sorry, a certificate of interested parties form, and then the small and minority businesses information that needs to be in there. Most of those things are for federal grants, if the bid that we are doing is going to be funded by federal monies. So, if it's a regular bid that we normally do, that's not gonna be affected by or funded by federal monies, then these won't apply, so that'll be something that would be addressed in the special terms and conditions. So, this is just our standard terms that'll be in for every grant packet. And then, in our special terms and conditions is where we'll address everything for the specific bid that is going out at the time.
Questions, Court?
So, I understand, I know this came out of a lot of the ARPA money, because we have to have the federal guidelines.
Yes, sir.
If we're just doing our regular, our regular bid packet, is it gonna have all these in it also?
Yes.
So, this will be in all of our bids?
Yes, sir. And then, but in our, the terms and conditions for the specific bid, the special terms and conditions, it'll notate out that the, you know, what the conditions are for that specific bid, so it'll supersede these.
I never thought we'd have to do so many things to give away some money.
Yeah. Any further questions or comments? To wrap in y'all in a nutshell, we're just updating our standard template. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Anything further? Entertained motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the standard bid, proposed standard bid packet.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the proposed standard bid packet template for Henderson County. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Court.
Item 10, consider and take action to reappoint Ivory Givens, Charlotte Slaton, and Dr. John Morton to Henderson County Emergency Service District Number Seven Board of Commissioners located in Precinct T, Precinct Three, starting on January the 1st, 2023, and ending December 31st of 2024. Now, there were several commissioners involved, I believe, or several precincts involved in this, but Commissioner McCam, I believe you made this request?
This one is in Precinct Two and Three. It's, a majority of it is in Three and a section of it is in Two also. These board members agreed to be reappointed. They've done a great job on it. All of us know most of these people, just like everybody else that volunteers for jobs. I want to say I appreciate them taking on this responsibility to take care of the taxpayers' money, and they've done, they've done a great job, and all of them want to get back on, so. Is there any questions?
All three of these have served several terms.
Several years, yeah, several terms on them. And I think a couple of them will probably, the next time, be changing out, but they wanted to do one more, so.
Okay.
No further questions. I move that we reappoint Ivory Givens, Charlotte Slaton, and Dr. J.D. Morton to the Henderson County Emergency Service District Number Seven Board of Commissioners located in Precinct Three and in Precinct Two, term starting on January 1st, 2023, and ending on December 31st, 2024.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and seconded by Commissioner Richardson to reappoint, excuse me, Ivory Givens, Charlotte Slaton, and Dr. J.D. Morton to the Henderson County Emergency Service District Number Seven Board of Commissioners. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Item passes unanimously. Item 11, consider and take action to appoint David Monk, Carrie Bressano, and Danny Bristow to Henderson County Emergency Service District Number Twelve Board of Commissioners located in Precinct Three, two-year terms starting on January the 1st of 2023 and ending on December 31st of 2024. Commissioner McCam?
This was the new emergency service district over in the Chandler area. I have to, I had to find five new commissioners to serve on that one. I think this is a great group. Every one of them were excited to be on there, and I think they'll do a super job starting this ESD up and getting it going. Is there any questions? There is some backup in there on each one of these individuals, so.
Now, does this make 10 ESDs or 11? Ms. Brown?
I'm thinking it's 11.
Four.
I think it is 11. That's 55 commercials. That is, they do a great deal of work, too, so.
I think everybody knows, you know, it's getting harder and harder to find these volunteers for these jobs. And I know Mr. Tackett can agree with this, is a lot of times, when you get in, you don't get out. But we're really glad that there's some individuals in Henderson County that'll step up and do
Any further questions or comments?
I just wondered how, was it hard finding the volunteers for this? Because I know it's probably coming up in my precinct.
No, not really. I'm gonna tell you, I conferred with the fire department and some individuals around town and some groups, and we found several of us had, most of these names was all the same. And we came, I come up with these five, and I went and visited with each one of them. All of them were excited to be on there, and I think they'll, I think we got a good group of different backgrounds, and they'll be a tremendous asset to this new organization. I think that's the main thing, start some of these new ones, is...
That's good to hear, that it wasn't too hard.
The amount of money they're having to handle is considerable now. And I think a lot of people don't understand that after we appoint them, then they take over. They're their own governing entity. They're not beholden to the Commissioners Court. Only through the audit is the only way they, if they come back and respond to us, otherwise, they're, they're their own governing entity. And I think we have to have individuals that are good stewards of the taxpayers' money.
Any other questions for the Commissioner?
Hearing non, I move that we appoint David Monk, Carrie Bressano, and Danny Bristow to Emergency Service District Number Twelve located in Precinct Three for two-year terms, January 1st, 2023, and ending December 31st, 2024.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and seconded by Commissioner Spigot to appoint David Monk, Carrie Bressano, and Danny Bristow... David Mont, Carrie Bressano, and Danny Bristow to the newly-formed Henderson County Emergency Service District Number Twelve Board of Commissioners located in Precinct Three for a two-year term. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item 12 is consider and take action to appoint Cody Seal and Nancy.
Berthoff.
Berthoff? To the Henderson County Emergency Service District Number Twelve Board of Commissioners located in Precinct Three for a one-year term, starting January the first of 2023 and ending December 31st of 2023. Commissioner.
This is the same ESD. These two members will be on a one-year term, so we'll be able to stagger them. And that's the only reason it's in a different motion. Same thing, you have backup in, in your work if you have any questions.
Hearing none.
If not, I move to appoint Cody Seal and Nancy Berthoff to Henderson County Emergency Service District Number Twelve Board of Commissioners located in Precinct Three for a one-year term, January 1st, 2023, and ending on December 31st, 2023.
I'll second. It's fine.
You want to flip a coin?
No, he can have it.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, and second by Commissioner Richardson, to appoint Cody Seal and Nancy Berthoff to Henderson County Emergency Service District Number Twelve Board of Commissioners located in Precinct Three for, for a one-year term. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item 13, receive financial reports. We have none. 14 is consider and take action on payroll dispersment, or dispersment. I'm having a hard time this morning. Distributions and accounts cash sheet. Mr. Trager, you got any of those? Item 15, consider and take action on submitted contracts. We have none. Item 16, consider and take action on requests for right-of-way permits. Item 17, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments. Ms. Lee.
We do have those. There are two amendments that I'd like to point out. First of all, most of this is just cleaned up from year end, but we did go ahead and issue a PO for the locks and camera systems at the jail. And that's in here, we took that from the contingency fund. And also, the sheriff has found a vehicle that can pull the.
Oh, no, that, that one is going to be.
Crime investigation.
Yes.
Anyway, yeah, he's found a vehicle on byboard, and so I've included that in here so that we can get that going. As you all know, it's pretty hard to find vehicles.
Is it going about, just about covering all your vehicles? How many did, how many did we end up getting?
We got 10 Tahoe's over there right now. Of course, we had one, we got a Defender, and Defender is over there rewiring them at our shop yesterday and today. And then we've got, found this one last week on, on byboard, and it's going to be used basically for, put some drones in and call specialized equipment inside it where it can be more secure instead of getting a man in the truck.
I'm glad we got them, because they were supposed to be here, what, in January or February, and we're just now getting them?
They were supposed to be here in March, and we received them about two weeks ago.
Any further questions on the budget amendments or comments?
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, and second by Commissioner Thule, to approve the budget amendments as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item 18, consider and take action on payment of bills. Ms. Carpenter.
Yes, sir, we have two sets. Our first set is amended fiscal year 2022, in the amount of $874,840.25.
Commissioner Spivey?
She's already answered my questions, Judge.
Commissioner Thule?
I have none.
Commissioner McCam?
I have none.
Commissioner Richardson?
No questions, Judge.
Entertain the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 bills in the amount of $874,840.25 as presented.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, and second by Commissioner Spivey, to approve the fiscal year 2022 bills in the amount of $874,840.25 as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Ms. Carpenter?
Fiscal year 2023 in the amount of $7,508.
Questions or comments, Court, concerning the 2023 bills? Hearing none, entertain the motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the fiscal year 2023 bills in the amount of $7,508 as presented.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Spivey, to approve the fiscal year 2023 bills in the amount of $7,508 as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item 19 is consider and take action on submitted plats.
We have two plats in Precinct Two, and all these are paid.
Mr. Thule?
Yes, sir. On the first plat, this is kind of like a replat. They've taken two lots of 103-r and 102-r and combined them into one, creating 102-r1.
Questions for the commissioner? Where's Red Bridge Cove?
It's the, like, when you go in and take a left of the bridge. You know where the bridge is?
Is this in the Pinnacle Club?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
All that property that's to the left of the bridge is being developed now.
Is a, is it a different subdivision?
It's a subdivision inside a subdivision, I think, is what they've done. Like Red, Red Bridge Cove is what they've called it.
Okay.
I think just like they've done Sandpiper, you know, in the back, and Diamond Oak or Diamond Bluff.
Okay.
They're kind of.
Anyway, hearing none, I move we approve the replat of Red Bridge Clove, Cove of lots 102-r and 103-r, creating lot 102-r1 for filing purposes only.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thule, and second by Commissioner Spivey, to approve the final replat of Red Bridge Cove, creating lot 102-r1 as presented for filing purposes only. All those in favor? Passes unanimously.
The next one is the one that we had a couple of weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago. And you, the additional information sheet, I went back and Janice and I did some research. And so this is how we got to lot 130-r. And you can see north of that is lot 131. And this gentleman owns lot 130-r and 131. And so their new plat that they want to create is taking 130-r and 131 and creating lot 130-r1. And we got the title block fixed. And all signatures are there.
Questions for the commissioner?
It's pretty much the same, they're taking two and making one.
Yes, sir. It used to be three lots, and then they went and made one lot 130-r to two lots, or from two lots to one lot. And then they, now they've added lot 131 into this mix to create lot 130-r1.
Any further questions?
Hearing none, Judge, I move we approve the Pinnacle Club Phase One, Section C, final plat of lot 130-dash, or, excuse me, replat of lots 30, 130-r and 131, creating lot 130-r1 for filing purposes only.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thule, and second by Commissioner Spivey, to approve the replat in the Pinnacle Club of Phase One, Section C, for the replat of lots 30-r and 131, creating lot 130-r1 as presented for filing purposes only.
Can you repeat that one more time, I'll?
No. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item 20 is open and consider bids.
Yes, Court, send out packets for the 2023 culvert pipe bids. Have the same measurements as we have done in the past, so if there is any updates on those, I'll need to know that. With the holiday coming up, it changes a little bit on the advertising and opening. So I was thinking with y'all's approval, we could run the first ad on the 29th, which is a Thursday, run the second ad on January 7th, which is a Saturday, and then do the opening on the 17th of January. However, those are just suggestions. We do have to wait 14 days from the date of the first ad to open. But other than that, just with the dates of the paper running on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays, that's really the only holdup or whatever that we have. And then the holidays fall in on Saturday.
Do you have a proposed date for the opening?
The 17th.
The 17th?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, Court?
Do you send these out to our current vendors, the big packet?
I haven't yet, until you guys approve this, then.
Or do they just have to catch it in the paper?
No, I'll send it to the current vendors that we utilize and the ones that we've sent them to in the past, so.
That includes email notification?
Yes, sir.
All of that. Any other questions? Entertain the motion on the release of the 2023 culvert pipe bid.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey, and second by Commissioner Richardson, to approve the release of the fiscal year 2023 culvert pipe bid. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously.
Thanks, Court.
Thank you. Item 21, consider and take action to adjourn. Is there any, anybody want to make any comments or discussion before we entertain that motion?
I hope everyone has a blessed holiday season and New Year.
Merry Christmas.
Grinch? Entertain that motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thule, and second by Commissioner McCam, to adjourn at 9:44. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Have a Merry Christmas, everyone. See you next year.